...January 28, 2021. Do we have any announcements?
As I was just reminded, and I'll remind the other commissioners, please turn your mic on. We are on push to talk this evening, and also please talk into the mic. Do we have any announcements from staff?
Yes, tonight for staff, we have two final plats that were filed since the previous meeting, the Marmel Library replats and the NCS addition over Alka Lewis Nelson. Also to inform the Planning Commission that we have started our integration with OpenGov. We've had a couple of different video meetings this week, and we're looking forward to starting that process for planning, finance, HR, permits, and code enforcement. Lastly, there is an addition to the agenda under City Council Liaison Reports, adding Commissioner Fisher for his report on December 21st, which happened after our previous December Planning Commission meeting. And then as a final note, if you'll look at the February liaisons, everybody got moved up one week with Commissioner Todd rolling off the commission. So if you'll just double check those dates at the end of the agenda.
Thank you. We will move on to approval of the minutes. You've all been provided a copy of the minutes in your packet. Does anybody have any corrections to the minutes?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All is in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right. Minutes are approved. We'll now open the public hearing, seeing no public comments on non-agenda items. And without old business, we will move right into new business. Item number one, the request to amend the Marmel Master Land Use Plan for property located at 100 Club Manor Drive. Staff, report, please.
All right. This is a resounding request for the subject property, which was previously presented to the Planning Commission in April of 2020 for the same SUR PRD designation, which was originally for up to 24 housing units. Planning Commission recommended a due pass to City Council for the request. The City Council denied the request in June 2020 mainly due to City Council, mainly due, excuse me, to Country Club member opposition out of safety concerns with traffic conflicts between the proposed development and pedestrian and golf cart traffic in the area. The owner has a new buyer interested in subdividing the land into a lower density of five single-family detached estate lots. And due to this change, they requested a waiver from City Council to be heard and was allowed to be heard again before the expiration of one-year waiting. First meeting of January, the City Council approved this waiver, and this item is now forward to the Planning Commission. The commissioners were provided with a zoning and land use analysis, which pointed out although this, the request is inconsistent with the Marmel Forward showing the subject property as open space, it also showed it as a utility, which is how it was being utilized in 2013 when the Marmel Forward was adopted by Resolution 201338. Since that time, the plant has been demolished, which the analysis considers a significant change to the neighborhood warranting consideration for an amendment request. Lot is considered a vacant infield lot, having some asphalt pavement and a few storage buildings. Staff discussed the request of rezoning of designation of PRD versus R1 with the applicant. Both staff and applicant agree that if zoning R1, the property owner would be allowed by right to subdivide the land into the highest number of single-family residences, which would be up to 16 lots. As PRD, both Planning Commission and City Council would see the development plan and verify it complies with the requested five-lot maximum development style, offering greater oversight and control than R1. The Marmel Country Club has indicated they oppose the request for rezoning and land use change. No other comments were received. Staff has recommended a due pass to City Council to amend the master land use plan from open space to special-use residential for the subject property.
All right. Thank you. I have some comment cards on this item, page three. First, we will hear from Mr. Terry Rousch, and I will remind all commenters that the comments are limited to three minutes. Once you hear the timer, we'll give you a little bit of grace, but try not to abuse it. And please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name's Terry Rousch. I live at 139 Shamboard Drive here in Marmel. I'm currently the Vice President of the Board at Marmel Country Club. Our President Brad Frederickson wasn't able to attend tonight, so he asked me to speak on our behalf. First, I'd like to inform the Commission that Mr. Ron Harris approached us with a request that we support his efforts to develop the property as residential home sites. At our regular board meeting in December, we met, and the Board unanimously opposed, voted to oppose the request and to continue to oppose any rezoning of the CAW property, and here's why. In the past year, we've made significant improvements to the club that include a renovation project to the back nine holes, and we more recently started a project to update our pool and patio area. We can certainly see additional opportunities for improvements in recreational facilities in the area specified. A reconstructed road running through the property next to the clubhouse, next to the pro shop, next to the pool area that we're continuing to update, we continue to feel will cause safety hazards for our members, many of which are kids, and in these areas that we are improving. Secondly, we question what the benefit is to the city versus the harm to the club. This area sits in the middle of the golf course, which has always been open space. We can, we continue to feel that it should stay open space so that can be used for recreational areas. While a handful of houses built by a developer that doesn't reside in our, in our city may generate some additional income, it's miniscule in compared to the revenue that is currently realized from the city, realized by the city from its club and its members. Additional rezoning removes any opportunity for the club to purchase the land as open space for those improvements that we'd like to make. Third, and probably most important to me, is just quality of life. I moved here 22 years ago with my family. Quality of life in Marmel is important to us, and the club is a big part of that, for our family and for our membership, which is now 400 strong. We continue to get new members and get the same feedback that this is an area that has brought, this is the reason, one of the reasons that brought them to Marmel when they were considering Central Arkansas. The golf course has been a staple of this community since it was founded. The Board and the membership will continue to oppose these changes that we feel that will be harmful to it. I'd like to thank you for your consideration in our position. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I've actually got a question for you.
Sure.
You'd mentioned the changing of the zoning being a potential obstacle to the club potentially buying that property to expand. Has the club made any efforts to try to purchase the property up to this point?
We have, we have voiced our interest to CAW, and we would look to have that opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? All right, next up, we have Mr. Gibb Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter, you have three minutes, and please state your name and address.
I'm Gibb Carpenter. I live at 222 Mountain Terrace Circle. It would probably be presumptuous of me to attempt to presume why the commission, or what the commission was thinking when they do what they do, but here's my observation. It seemed from your discussion last time that you might have felt that the role, that your role was more suited to the technical review of the project design than the matter of the use of the land. Marmel has a master land use plan. You are the Planning Commission, and it's very much up to you to determine the use according to our city code. If for no other reason, then your rejection raises the bar for the City Council to make a contra decision. Madam City Attorney has done a good job in clarifying the laws regarding zoning, both with the council and then during Monday's workshop, but allow me to offer some emphasis. Let's go to the good book, and of course, I'm referring to the city code, and begin with what I believe is the prime directive. Now, that's 94-492, and I quote, "Open space areas shall be maintained so that their use and enjoyment as open space are not diminished or destroyed." That's the end of the quote. Of course, country clubs are in allowed use NOS, and recreational amenities seem to be encouraged. Back to the book, section 94-98 says, "The proposed land use is compatible with and will not adversely affect other property in the area where it is proposed to be located." That's the end of that quote. I assure you that a city-grade street through our cart staging area will adversely affect the club's property. And finally, Mr. Harris has referred to his proposal as golf course lots. That's incorrect. They would be driving range lots, and you, as the Planning Commission, in planning for the appropriate use of the property, might anticipate the adverse effects of that situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Harris, it's your turn, again, three minutes, and please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Ron Harris, 6309 Southwind Drive, North Little Rock, Arkansas. And so, y'all, we've been here before, and I've heard the comments from the Country Club, and as you can imagine, they maybe not be in favor of what I'm trying to do, but I'm just a builder, and a builder that's, that's found 4.5 acres or five acres. And as a builder, there's not very many lots available on Marmel Country Club or the driving range, but there's also three lots that's going to be river view right there as well. So it's quite nice back there, and if I can, you know, show you some pictures of some custom houses that, you know, we're looking at trying to do back there, and where, you know, you don't have to spend the money on your own swimming pool, you don't have to buy your own, build your own tennis courts, you don't have to worry about a restaurant, and so you could just drive your golf cart right to those places from your nice home that's in this estate lot. I think we're familiar with the traffic study that was done when Central Arkansas Water was there, and it was equivalent to 14 houses. And we're simply trying to put five houses there and meander around. We look forward to working with Marmel Country Club and enhancing that drive-through there, and whatever the city wants us to do as well. So it's just a great opportunity, and I'll get you the revenue data for the five estate lots, but next time I'm here or going with City Council, but I don't have those numbers ahead with me right now. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Harris?
Thank you.
Mr. Harris is here, and as I understand, we have further applicants, representatives. Any commissioners have any questions or comments to staff or the applicant?
To conclude with comment?
Sure. Oh, yes, that does conclude.
That concludes comment. Thank you.
I guess I'll have a few. If applicants want to respond, that's fine. The function of that piece of property, and it still would be today, if Central Arkansas Water not come along, be a water treatment plant, and was for a good while, a buyout was going on, or I should say the transition, whichever way you prefer to say that. And I think safety has been a big concern for this commission as we move forward. And looking at the planning analysis, it's cut by a third. And further, if it's still a water treatment plant, you would have chemical trucks moving in and out, and although not a member today, I have, have been a member of the Country Club and been standing there when chemical trucks drive by, and I just wonder if somebody stops and thinks exactly what is being transmitted in that vehicle that's passing, you know, a few feet while they're calling cars and in and out, dropping. So I know that that goes away, which I'm encouraged to happen. The other thing that that seems like is that we've had, when was the date that it was before, six, six months, five, six months? It appears that the Country Club, but it had ample opportunity to purchase Central Arkansas Water regarding the purchase of the property, if they were interested. It's been viable for quite some time. So I'm not for sure if, and Scott's, I know watching in regarding why that stayed open space and wasn't actually rezoned, I'm not for sure how that was routed through the strategic plan. The thing about the driving range is that I'm aware of that as well, too, and there is, and the Country Club has all the rights to do that. Mr. Harris is fully aware of the traffic arrangements there, and I would assume the fence would stay up, although I guess that's an election of the Country Club or an election of the Property Owners Association that Mr. Harris may or may not form.
Mr. Johnson, may I answer your question?
Please do. You know, I don't know what the purpose of staying that, it stayed open space when the function was not, and you may or may not be aware of that, and it may not be per se just an observation.
So the, the Marmel Forward was completed in 2013, as was mentioned in the analysis, and during the time that the Marmel Forward was done, which was adopted by the city as an amendment to its comprehensive plan, the, the utility was fully functioning as a water treatment plant, and based on the comments at the time that are shown in that plan, citizens and those who are involved in that plan didn't feel like that the water treatment plant was going to go away, nor did CAW want to take it over. So it was open space because utilities can be utilized. It was, open spaces was set aside to make it easier to provide utilities. So that's why the plan has it. The fact that it went away after the plan was adopted, as we mentioned, is really kind of a trigger from our standpoint that at least gives the opportunity for a relook at this location.
Everything around the golf course is residential, is it not?
So when we looked at it, the way that the golf course was designed, it does have cluster housing around the property. There's multifamily and single-family development that are in pocket neighborhood styles. So in essence, this project would be considered similar to that, which is why it really conforms to a residential-style land use change. So that's why staff recommended approval.
Well, it's changed, you know, but I am rest assured that the traffic and the type of traffic that was occurring, that's occurred there for years, and the function of the club and how they shared that ingress egress, it would be safer, it would have been safer before any other development than a water treatment plant hauling chemical in and out and sludge residual, or you say water treatment plant residual, moving in and out. So as far as safety, I think that's something that's a benefit. I don't know, from the applicant's standpoint, is it more concern of what's coming, would be coming during the PRD than what's coming before, being open spaces, being able to work with the club and find something of benefit between the two rather than just oppose. But I'm sure they discussed that in December meeting, and that's not really what's before us today.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
I have a comment. I was looking through the land use and zoning map today and tried to remember, again, been here a little while, up on top of the mountain, the water tanks, they're OS. All the land around it is R1, and I believe, I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure that the sewage treatment plant, until they did their upgrade, when it was Marmel Water, was OS.
It's OS adjacent to that, I know that.
And also, the city building, which is the Animal Control Center now, was also in OS. And then when those structures were built, we changed the zoning on those areas, and then when we extended the road out. So that and the, remember, the water treatment plant existed before the land use and everything else. It was here first, before the golf course, I believe, and I think Jess Alden donated the land to the golf course because that was what you do to get a community started. So, you know, Marmel's had a lot of change. Some of it I wish we hadn't, and some of it we just have to think about and make our best judgment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Todd. Anything further from the commission? Mr. Carpenter, do you have further comment?
Mr. Chairman, if it's allowed, I'd like to answer Commissioner Johnson's question.
Commissioner Johnson, you ask if or why didn't the club make an effort to purchase the property? We very much did, first informally and then formally, and we have received a letter back from Central Arkansas Water that the only reason they would not accept our current was because they were, had a pending contract that was subject to conditions, and the conditions would be whether the property could be rezoned. I'm certain, they didn't specify that, but both from the Realtor guidance that has been their representative, both the first time around and the second time around, they've been influenced on the value, and I give, I understand they have fiduciary responsibility to get as much as they can for the property, but we have a situation where we know the appraised value is open space because we just went through this on the back nine project, and we can only borrow as much as the land will appraise for our, for our purpose, which is open space. And one of you, it may have been, actually, it may have been Scott, said that, you know, there's residential all around the golf course, and that's accurate. This isn't all around the golf course. This is in the middle of our property, and we'd like very much to expand our recreational facilities into that property, but that's not going to be possible if it's rezoned residential.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Well, I wasn't going to speak, but I'm Mark Bingman. I'm the Realtor representing CAW, and to Mr. Carpenter's comments about their efforts of trying to buy the property, they've made it very well known that they do want it, and I can understand that, and I can understand it would be a good use for expansion of that. But I would have to, without getting into any confidential information about the contracts or about the multiple attempts of trying to buy it, the land was listed at the appraised price. Now, what the entire acreage of the Country Club, being OS, was appraised at, would probably be, as very well most of you would know, the larger the track, the smaller it is on a per-square-foot basis. When it's a smaller track, it's going to be more, but nonetheless, the, the property was appraised by CAW, and that's what we put it on the market for. Their offer was less than one-fifth of what that appraised value is. So CAW and their fiduciary to the citizens of Marmel, trying to get as much land as they can, because as you know, all the proceeds of this go towards paying off that bond early. It would be their fiduciary right to the citizens to get as much as they can for the land. So it's not anything about the Realtor, it's not anything about, you know, anything of that nature. They're trying to get as much land as they can for the land. If the Country Club wanted it, they could have paid what the previous contract was willing to pay, and now the second buyer is willing to pay, but they chose not to do that. So that's why it has never been worked out with the Country Club. Any questions?
Mark, can you tell me the timeline without, if you're, if you're allowed to do so without breaking any of your confidential requirements between your client, between the first contract, which I know is a different owner, and the time the second contract was effective?
I would be just guessing at this point, but it was probably three or four months.
So during that period of time, was there ongoing negotiations with?
There were discussions and offers made from the Country Club. Yes. Like I said, a fifth of what has been accepted and what has been appraised at.
So was there ever a contract in place between Marmel Country Club and the golf course?
No.
Excuse me, Marmel Country Club and your client, CAW?
Ask that question again.
Was there any proposed formal offer of contract between Central Arkansas Water and Marmel?
Yes, two.
Anything further for Mark?
Thank you.
Mr. Carpenter, we'll do one more rebuttal on this, and then I think we may need to move on.
That was absolutely incorrect. There has never been a contract. There was one written offer to, directly to the executive director, I believe, maybe chief executive officer, and I, his name's just, of Central Arkansas Water, from Marmel Country Club. It was not a contract. His response to us was he could not accept our offer because the property was already under contract. We would have been happy to sign a contract with an offer. Mr. Bingman is correct. We did not offer what the previous price was because frankly, we can't fund that, and we know exactly what it'll appraise for per acre as open space. His market appraisal was based on the intended use of residential. As a residential developer, that's what I do, y'all know me, I know what residential appraised value is versus open space, and all we can do is go to a lender, because we just did it, borrowed $600,000 to redo the irrigation system on the back nine, and they loaned us based on the value of the property per acre. So just, just a point of clarification, never was a contract, only one written offer, and it was not through Mr. Bingman, it was directly to Central Arkansas Water, and they indicated that they appreciated the offer, would continue to consider it, but they were under contract, subject to conditions.
Mr. Carpenter, was that Tad Bohannon that you sent that to? Thank you.
That's exactly who it was. I meant to bring his response letter with me, and I can make it available to the commissioners if you'd like to see it.
If they didn't think the price, although you felt the price was appropriate, Gibb, and I know you're in, you're in the development business, you understand that, but if he feels like he can get five more times the value, and, and I believe that Mr. Bingman is correct, although I didn't read that before I came, that the contract between the buyout between SID 500 and Central Arkansas Water says that those proceeds do go back to pay off the bonds, that's correct.
We understand and accept that. My question to you would be, what is the role of the Planning Commission? Is that to see, to negotiate the highest price per acre for property or for the best use of land for the citizens of Marmel?
That's what we're here to try to determine, and I heard your president's public comments, and I was, I was struggling through them. That's why I offered my comments back, because I guess I'm, I'm a little slanted and have a clear understanding of how a water treatment plant works and how it's functioned within your facility for quite some time, and how the residential lots could work. It doesn't seem like Central Arkansas Water is interested in taking your, your letter, so the property will remain back.
Well, they indicated they were interested, but were not in a position to do it, Commissioner. And also to your observation, that plant has been there, and I've been a member of that club for over 25 years. There was one occasion that we had regular truck traffic when they changed out the filtration system at the plant, and it went from lime to reverse osmosis or something, and they hauled a bunch of sludge out of there. And then we had a bunch of trucks when they tore down the plant. But beyond that, and I'm not going to challenge the traffic study, although I never saw traffic strips, and it was basically what I would call a hearsay report, but the, the content of traffic and the timing of the traffic, and if you've been there, or any of you have been there for, when we staged a tournament, can you imagine somebody trying to get out and go to work or go to school, and we got 40 golf carts in the way to start the Chamber of Commerce turn? So that, that is some of what we're concerned with, but frankly, we're also concerned with our opportunity to put pickleball courts or to put a golf training facility or to expand tennis courts up there, because as I said, this is between the driving range, oh, and by the way, lighted tennis courts. So maybe I got all the questions there, thanks.
Anything else from the commission?
I need to clarify, the Realtor, me, myself, or the company did, never did a market study on the value of that land. That was done by a full-fledged certified appraiser before the property was ever listed with RPM, so I had nothing to do with the valuation of that property.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Does anyone have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for a due pass recommendation to the city of Marmel, City Council, to amend the master land use plan from OS to special-use residential for the subject property.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? We will issue a due pass recommendation. Moving on to item number two, the request to amend the Marmel Master Zoning Map for the same property from OS to PRD. Staff, report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Comments from the previous item are the same. It was also included in the zoning analysis that you were all provided. Again, Marmel Country Club has indicated they oppose the request as well. No further comments have been received. We, staff again recommend a due pass recommendation to City Council to amend the Marmel Master Zoning Map from open space to planned residential development for the subject property.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, that's a recommendation of do not pass by staff.
Is that, that is a?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. No, no, you're right.
Item two, Scott.
My bad. Do-pass, you got it right. Sorry.
Looking awful comfortable there, so.
Sorry.
You got something else on the TV?
No, I'm all wrong, sorry.
Any comments or questions from the Commissioners of Staff or the applicant or applicant's representative?
Make a motion to request to amend the Moll Mill Master Zoning Map for the property located at 100 Club Manor Drive, known as Moll Mill Water Plant for Open Space to PRD for the hallway engineering firm, hallway engineering for the applicant representative of Central Arkansas Water. Depending on staff comments.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Move on to item number three, a request to amend the Moll Mill Master Land Use Plan for property located along Commercial Park Drive for hallway engineering as representative owner Gene Pfeifer. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the first request for rezoning for this specific tract of land along Commercial Park Drive, although requests for surrounding tracts were made back in 2001 with the Planning Commission and City Council. The City Council did approve one rezoning from C3 to C2 to the north, which is the current apartment complex, as well as many storage. The original request was for a proposed senior living facility, but it appears that project did not materialize, and multifamily apartments were built instead. In addition, staff found an ordinance 395, which was approved later that year in 2001, but was never codified. The ordinance amended section 94 to allow C2 town center uses in a C3 commercial area, but not allow the R3 component, which is allowed by right in C2. The applicant proposes a rezone from C3 commercial service to PRD planned residential district development, excuse me, to allow the development of single-family detached and multifamily attached units for a senior living community. The existing land use of commercial would be incompatible with PRD, so the land use would require a change to special use residential in order to accommodate the proposed housing types. The Commissioners were provided a zoning and land use analysis, which pointed out that the request is inconsistent with Moll Mill Forward. The municipal plan shows this area as a commercial area that is consistent with areas next to the industrial complex to the north and east, acting as a buffer to the residential to the south and west. There is an existing storage facility to the south, which could create disturbance to the proposed owners' occupied housing types. In addition, uses allowed in the adjacent C3 zone tracks. If developed that way, may be incompatible with the residential types proposed. Staff concerns center around the incompatibility of a PRD zone with surrounding zones, and a rezone could be seen as spot zoning. The draft sketch plan is inconsistent with design requirements set out in the subdivision ordinance for street widths, green space, and detention requirements, and converting more commercial zoned areas to residential could have long-term impacts on future sales, tax, revenue, economic growth. Staff does not recognize, staff does, excuse me, recognize that there is high demand for different housing types located closer to the town center, as seen in the Carnehan Village Development, north of Club Manor. Also, this area has not seen any commercial development, other than the repurpose of the old Kroger into a storage facility and a bank. The move of Kroger from this location to the town center had lasting impacts on the marketability of the area to support C3-type development. So, staff agrees that a reevaluation of the land use and zoning is warranted for the entire Commercial Park area, to bring it more in line with current market trends and better promote development of the space that is in harmony with adjacent land uses and municipal plan. Staff has indicated they are willing to work with the applicant to achieve this. No comments were received from public notices on this item. Staff recommends a do-not-pass recommendation to City Council to amend the Moll Mill Master Land Use Plan from commercial to special use residential for the subject property.
Thank you. Any questions or comments of staff or the applicant?
I've got one. On page three of the analysis and summary, there's a sentence in there that says, "If developed as residential, there would be limited property tax collection while increasing city services." And the reason I bring that up is because in the other analysis with five lots, you said it was going to increase, or somebody said it was going to increase it, I'm confused. You've got a much larger development, and it's not going to increase. You've got a much smaller, and it is going to increase the tax base.
Is that comparison between the commercial and residential? I noticed that, too, Commissioner Fisher. Is that the difference between, because commercial wasn't going to go by the golf course, we understand that. So, is the difference here comparing the commercial to the residential, Scott? I guess, that's the question I have, too.
Yeah, it's the value of commercial over residential.
So, is your opinion, then, that the potential of commercial there versus the 77 lots has a better tax benefit to the city?
Well, a more detailed analysis would need to be done in order to determine that, but we were looking at just the overall tax value that commercial property brings in versus residential. And then, you also have sales tax, our main concern is potential sales tax revenues, which is where the majority of the city's revenue base comes from, to support city services. Converting that to residential, you don't get as much tax benefit as you would if you had commercial businesses there.
You would get tax benefit for the people living there, shopping and eating and things of this nature. I think that this gives me a little bit of a dilemma. I mean, this property Gene's had forever. He offered to give it to the city years ago for building the city hall, and the city didn't take it. He'd been trying to market it, I know Gene, and I'd say, you know, will it ever be commercial? That's my problem at this point. I'm not necessarily in tune with what I've seen proposed, and I know that's not what we're acting on tonight. And I would have a problem if we passed this, going along with what's being proposed for that area. But, man, but that was, my comment was, was on the taxes, I didn't understand what you were getting at. And thank you for the clarification.
Madam City Attorney, is ordinance number 395 effective?
I'm sorry, I can't hear all that well. What did you, I heard Madam City Attorney and something about an ordinance. Can you repeat that?
Sure. Is ordinance, although it's not codified, is ordinance 395 effective?
As far as we can determine, I've looked through the citations that are in the code to the ordinances, we've done searches, and it looks like 395 is effective.
So, there's not a standing law in place that it has to be codified to be official, if you will?
Well, no, it, I mean, it's a duly passed ordinance, it just hasn't been, and it, but it apparently has not been codified as it should have been.
Scott, is there any differential in your alignment of your analysis than, that differs between the January 25, 2001 memo that Mr. Patterson provided?
Well, back then, some of the questions from the comments that came out of Planning Commission dealt with wondering whether the town center area, if you changed the zoning of this area, whether if that would extend the town center across the Boulevard, which is not how the master, how the comprehensive plan was designed. In my opinion, I think that the area probably for the uses that you find in a C3 are, may not necessarily be the best area for that zoning. So, I think after the overall analysis, it's about the same, but back then, they were looking at a change to a C2 and not a PRD. So, the challenge that we have is with the PRD that they're proposing, they have single-family detached housing units surrounded by C3, which is a more commercial service area zone, so it's just not, the two zones aren't necessarily compatible with one another, and that's similar to the 2001 with the, some of the, so, one of the things that they had, they, one of the reasons for that 395 ordinance, and Mr. Pfeifer had agreed to withdraw the rezoning to C2, because back then, they preferred to have a C2-type commercial uses, but they preferred not to have residential uses that close to the industrial park. So, allowing a C2 use without the R3 component, achieve that with that ordinance. In my opinion, I think because the apartment complex over there has been fairly successful as far as providing additional housing units, I think, I'm not necessarily opposed to residential, but I think the whole area needs to be looked at as to the type and the zones that needs to be surrounding it. There's other issues that have been brought forth from fire and public works concerning the traffic at Club Manor where it meets, I'm sorry, not Club Manor, where the Boulevard meets Commerce Park Drive. They see a lot of severe accidents at that intersection, so increasing the amount of traffic coming onto the Boulevard may increase the number of incidents. So, that was a little bit of a concern back in 2001, I think we've seen some of that now, but regardless of whether if it's residential or commercial, you're still going to see an increase of traffic on, at that intersection. So, it's kind of a detailed explanation for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris, do you have a comment?
Yes, I'm enjoying this, the thinking and, but it's my understanding that we have to defer this tonight, because all the proper notifications have not been, weren't sent out. I'm sorry that Eric cannot be here today, but that's just what I heard, I didn't even, I didn't even think we were going to be on the agenda tonight. So...
Is that adequate, is that accurate? Is there a notification that wasn't satisfied?
We did send hallway that, I guess we hadn't heard specifically that they hadn't sent on. Scott?
So, we had sent a request asking for verification of the public notices, and we never heard back from hallway engineering.
And I think we got that, that they didn't, there was an error, and they didn't get sent out. So, we're, I guess, I don't know if I do that or not, but I mean, we're asking, I'm asking for y'all to defer this, because we stopped in our preparation, knowing that we weren't going to be on tonight.
Mr. Harris, do you have a date when you'll be ready by?
Oh, your next Planning Commission meeting.
Question for Madam City Attorney, would this be appropriate for a motion to table, or would this, would this be considered moot as public notices not be done and effectively null, as if it were never on the agenda?
Scott may be more familiar with that than I am, but I would think it would be, we never had authority, or we weren't, it wasn't properly up for consideration on our agenda, so I think it would be the second, that it would be null, and they can come back and fulfill that again.
I agree. The, when we originally sent out our request for that information, we told them that it would be pulled from the agenda if the verifications couldn't be provided.
And for clarification, this is for both the zoning and the land use, correct?
That is correct, yes.
I think the difference in the tabling is that we have to hear the exact, he couldn't change the application in any form if it's tabled.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. But if it's effectively null because of the lack of?
Correct.
If you didn't, no discuss. Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Mr. Harris.
Yeah, I was enjoying the conversation, but I...
You kind of stood up a little earlier.
Well, I, hey, I was trying.
He might have been taking notes, right?
Was I not, my finger?
Taking notes.
All right, thank you all, appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, well, as items three and four are null, we will close the public hearing and move on to liaison reports. December 21st, Commissioner Fisher.
Yes, December 21st, that was a relatively short meeting, there wasn't anything on it that really impacted us. It was the last meeting of John Vaffrazan and Doug Ladner, who some of you may know, who's been a city director for a number of years. He was recognized for his representation on the Emergency Medical Services Board, and that was about it.
All right. Meeting of January 4th was mine, the only issues regarding the Planning Commission, there was second reading of ordinance 1020, amending the city code to allow the Director of Planning and Permits to approve minor subdivision splits, and then it was first reading of ordinance 1021 to amend the city code regarding the number of copies for flat submissions, and that was all obtained to Planning Commission. We have Tuesday, January 19th, Commissioner Ramsey?
It was a fairly short meeting, and it was the second reading for amending the code, so they didn't vote on it, and that was about it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Ramsey. Assignments for February, February 1st, Commissioner Johnson is yours, and February 16th, that is you, Commissioner Green. Anything else to discuss?
Yes. It's been an honor, this is my last meeting. I am not going away. Yeah, I won't be out of the audience. Someone has said I've already got to concern, I mean, forms to fill out and bring in for my comments, and it's rather ironic, the agenda, the meeting, the ordinance, back in 2001 that we just heard from, that was one of my first meetings as a Planning Commissioner. So, it was like, time was rushing by, and I recognized all these names and tried to remember what I did back then. But again, thank you for letting me serve, and it's been an honor.
John, it's been an honor to have you here.
And with that?
The mayor should get you a plaque, I'm going to go back and ask him.
Well, at the very least, we owe Commissioner Todd this motion.
The mayor's right there.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion in a few seconds. Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? We're adjourned.